I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your fellow workers of the nation, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a roll call please. David Mabell?
Here.
Dean Faba?
Excuse me.
She's excused, she called the secretary.
Lynn Shane?
Yes ma'am.
Jim Christopher?
Yes.
Neil Lawton?
Yes.
Jennifer Sevenye?
Yes.
Jim Punti?
Yes.
Thank you. We have the minutes from our June 30th meeting. Any comments, corrections?
I have other corrections. Could it be called to order by chairperson seven eight instead of commissioner because you're not the same as I am? I'm a whole life. You're a higher life. Even though you were my student.
That's true. Still a lower life.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other comments, corrections, questions?
I make a motion that we accept. The approval of the minutes from June 30th, 22.
Excellent.
Excellent.
I'll second that.
I make a motion for change of the agenda. And let's have a public meeting prior to discussion of the ordinance of everything of the outdoor theater. If that's a possibility. Yes sir?
Yeah, we have to have a public hearing.
You need to take a vote on the agenda for...
Oh yeah, I apologize.
Um, in favor of the approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Right. Meeting minutes approved. Now, next is the approval of the agenda.
Let's make a change and have a public meeting.
Hearing?
Hearing.
Yeah. Instead of new business, that will be a public hearing for the ordinance change. Any other changes, corrections to the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I'll second the motion and that will through the agenda as a matter. Any resolutions, notices, communications that we need to review or... All right, then we will move to the next item on the agenda, which is the public hearing. We make a motion to open...
I make a motion that we...
Excuse me for a minute. Just want to make sure we have a motion to open the hearing and then we'll have a motion to close the hearing. So...
Make a motion, we open the public meeting for this discussion of the ordinance change.
Yeah, we're going to have a public hearing. Um, second that?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we'll move into a public hearing to discuss the ordinance change to allow the outdoor theater in the area, district known as RM-1, which is for those in the audience, the property known as the Renaissance Festival. And we discussed it in our June 30th meeting. Currently, our ordinance only allows for a outdoor type theater to be in an I-1 zoning district, which is industrial. And so, in order to allow this use on that property, we're amending the ordinance. And so, we, um, in the ordinance that was sent out in the email, the changes were made in red, so if you had that, you can see. The one we have here tonight, it's in a lighter color, but you can see where the changes are. And so, we're going to expand and allow the use in the RM-1 family districts, which is the Renaissance Festival. That is the zoning for that district. So, you got it, it's pretty simple, changes. Any questions or comments from members? Any comments or questions from members of the audience?
Is that all summer long? Having to have to go to the rental?
Uh, you know, it will be the, by having the zoning changed, it will be permissible to have your, um, down, that's not feasible. I don't think anyone's going to go in the snow. And I don't think they're going to be plumbing it, I don't think there's any time for that. But it would be during periods of the year where you can traverse that light over with the car. So...
So, is there going to be like traffic control like it is for the Renaissance Festival?
Well, currently, because of the size of the screen that they're planning in that particular field, is Ron Risher, Rashil with the front of the, uh, Dixie Highway, they're only planning on about two to four hundred cars, which is going to be a small percentage of what is typically there during the Renaissance Festival. So, it's a much smaller volume of cars that will be going in. We had not planned on having traffic control for that. It's going to be, you know, basically eight o'clock to maybe midnight, it's going to be kind of darker hours. Is that, is that right? About, you know, about eight to midnight would be when that traffic would be there. The, the sound for the movie would be through your car radio, tune into the station. So, asking, you know, someone having their windows open and stuff, I mean, it would be within the vehicle that took it in.
How close is Dixie Highway there?
The screen is...
Screens and the stretching, or the screen's going to be?
The screen's going to be facing the village, right away from the road, right? So...
So, headlights will go on the Dixie Highway?
Um, I...
So...
Just one, one ticket, I, I want to answer without Ben to take it back.
It is a public hearing and the concerned citizens need to give their name and address where they live in minutes, one at a time.
And you're in 7171, the first house on Perryville. And you're in a Renaissance Festival, traffic's bad enough on Renaissance Festival, let alone every night when the drive-in open and cars coming out, squealing tires and whatever else and that kind of stuff. It's, it's enough for just one weekend on a Renaissance Festival, let alone every day for an outdoor theater. You're going to have, you know, who knows if I ever goes on with the drive-ins. I think that's, if that was recessed far off the road, that might be a different story. But if you're going to have it right there on Dixie, I mean, that's right there. I mean, you can even, you can even hear the police directing traffic and yelling at the, at the cars for traffic control when Renaissance Festival's there. That's, that's pretty bad.
So, do you have, I know you wanted to get started on the screen, what were your plans as far as the distance of that screen from Dixie Highway? What is required? I get a few more questions.
Yeah, so from the center of Dixie Highway, or both hall lanes, sorry, that center out, you have to be about sixty-five feet is what they're asking, right? We were actually going to be about seventy-five feet away from that center point of Dixie Highway. As far as visual for headlights, if you look at Dixie Highway right there where a screen is, we have tall trees, lots of shrubs, it is a lot of foliage right there, so it's going to protect Dixie Highway from the headlights as we discussed last time, and I did verify and look at that.
So, just because I want you to further elaborate on that, so when you say where you're putting the screen, you described on the property, where you're putting the screen?
Yeah, we're about, roughly about a hundred and fifty yards from the entrance of the festival, going north, just south of that first cell phone tower that's off of Dixie Highway right there. And then, so it's going to sit there, and so the cars are going to be facing roughly, you know, north and northeast, they're going to be at a angle going towards, away from any houses, right? There are no houses in direct line of where we're facing the cars. So, there will be no houses in that direct line.
From my point of view, that one section is wide open from Dixie. That point's directly in, it's bad enough now that we have to have illegal fireworks behind us, we have to have more traffic on a Saturday basis. I understand where they're coming from, but from my end of it, it's nice to be able to go and sit outside and have a quiet for a change. I mean, on an average day, we're going to break your traffic coming down Perryville Road, it's still beyond, doing burnouts, let alone everybody coming in and out of drive-in, in and out of Renaissance Festival. You know, there'd be alcohol, there'd be whatever else, which normally happens in any, in any drive-in, has ever happened with that?
No, there's no alcohol.
No, that's what you said. I understand what that, but I'm saying that right there, the sound travels like you wouldn't believe. If I can hear, if I can hear the open county sheriff directing traffic, almost word for word at times, it's going to be just as bad having traffic coming in and out of there. Car radios, I mean, I know it's on the radio, it's a great deal, but it's going to travel and I have to hear it all night long. I get woken up one, one o'clock, one thirty in the morning for illegal fireworks in the back lines.
In the back, you have a question.
Nicole Taliber, 7201 Perryville Road. My family owns a lot at the corner of Perryville and Dixie, it's currently for sale, it's owned residential. How tall is that screen?
The screen actually starts saying it's ten feet off the ground and then it goes another thirty feet, so the top of the screen will be forty feet off, off the ground.
Okay, so it's, there's going to be a giant screen?
About sixty foot wide.
So, back when this master plan all started, you guys were very adamant about unification and setbacks and all of that. We have rotten manor and now we're going to have a forty foot screen. And I know, she lives right on the hill, she's going to see it, it's going to be right there. I thought when this first came up, that this was going to be somewhere out the back, but right there, there's no way to hide it, there's no way to make it pretty. I mean, rotten manor's off the road and it's an eyesore. And this is going to compete with that, a three-minute cannon blast every three minutes at Rod, at Rod Manor. I mean, you guys said you didn't want this to look like Door Highway, you didn't want it in the curb openings like Waterford, we're getting there real fast.
No, we're not putting any additional curb, um...
I know, but when, when does it stop? I mean, we're, I mean...
We're keeping the same property the way it is, we're just trying to put additional use.
Okay, well, and I didn't even get the letter. My letter was returned and I got a phone call that my letter notified me about this, which was returned here yesterday. And I know that Mr. Minock never received the letter either because they were married, uh, they were mailed to the parcel numbers and not to taxpayer addresses. So, and, and the, the letter was dated, postmarked the fourteenth, the day after the last township meeting, in which it was discussed about this, and you guys, Mr. Christopher, you said at forty-one minutes, this was done in the water, it wasn't going to happen. And the day after...
Wait a minute, Nicole, what did I say?
At forty-one minutes in that meeting, you were asked about this, came up about the drive-in.
Yeah.
And you said that nothing was going forward at this point.
I'm not sure exactly what I said, but I remember being enthusiastic about it, so being dead in the water.
Well, because the festival isn't going on and this kind of wasn't really a thing?
I think the statement, Jim, was in regards to people that have been calling and asking about the Renaissance Festival, that somebody sort of in the newspaper that they were wanting to have it. It said that the Renaissance Festival...
Hold on a minute, I'll look at the call. I don't think I said, I mean, I could have, but I don't think so.
It was something, I mean, it was all brought up and it was kind of not that there was anything, and then this, this letter that was returned yesterday was postmarked the day after the meeting. So, it kind of was misleading at that point.
Yes sir?
I'm William Ponce at 7181 Perryville Road. I brought, you know, the same sort of thing that I want to say here, I brought up about a year ago or so, when we had another meeting, regards to things being built up along Dixie Highway. And the township is always touted that they want to keep this area rural. Now, putting a drive-in movie theater, you know, right off Dixie Highway, you know, that I think, I can practically probably see from my house as well, is not keeping it rural. I mean, I had this argument before, is that, you know, the idea of keeping the township rural seems to be for everybody else except for anybody that's close to Dixie Highway. And I, you know, I'm, it's just getting ridiculous, the amount of stuff that wants to keep getting built up along Dixie Highway, and there seems to be no respect or whatever for the people that, you know, I've lived on that same street for forty-nine years, and I want to keep it rural. I don't want to see businesses and stuff being developed along there. So, I mean...
So, we had about two years ago, meetings with the public, where we talked about, within this district, there are very few areas that will be eligible per se for commercial development. And we talked about the Dixie Highway, and that that would be the area in this community where there would be commercial type development. But we said, we, we don't, you're exactly right, we don't want it to look like Waterford, where there's an oil change in a seven-eleven store, and a gas station, and a car wash, and keep, you know, curb cuts, and, and, you know, so it looks like Dixie Highway's south of here. So, we said, no, we understand that there has to be development in this community, we can't, we can't bar that. And so, what we can do is try to fashion it such that it is still, gives the impression of a rural community. So, we're looking at things like rotten manor, the Renaissance Festival, and outdoor drive-in theater, being things that are within the nature of this rural community. So, we're not building brick and mortar buildings and putting in factories and, and a lot of, for example, we have the off-road vehicle park that's going to be going in. And there will be businesses that will want to go, come to that, there could be some party store type things, or a car wash, or there will be, that will bring businesses. So, we've talked about, as we put those businesses in, that we have an aesthetic look to them, so that it has sort of that up north feel, that we have spacing off the highway. So, we are looking at Dixie Highway will have commercial development.
So, basically, everything is going to stay rural, except for us that live by Dixie Highway? How, how, would you want to have, look out your window and stare at a drive-in movie theater across the street from your house? I don't think you would, would you?
It's, you know, when you think, what, it's going to be the parking, what you're going to see differently is a screen that's, you know, off to the northeast corner, as I understand it, or be the northeast corner. The field is going to stay the same, they're not paving it, they're not, you know, it, the field is going to be the same as it's been. We're not doing any additional curb cuts off of Dixie Highway for another entrance into that, we're using the exact same entrance that we have. And it's going to be, rather than all day long, it's going to be in the evening hours. Uh, I don't know, I'm guessing, you know, April to October, I mean, something like that.
Well, I think, yeah, I thought maybe May, late May to October. I think most of the drive-ins open either in late May or the evening first.
Okay. So, I mean, that's kind of, so evenings, seven days a week, is that the plan?
Um, no, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, eight to midnight, you know? And again, we're not, other than the screen and those vehicles there, you're not going to see, oh, I'm sorry, take that back. There will be temporary tents for concessions. Yeah, so, so there will be that.
I think the plan is right now is to put those up near the screen, so they aren't going to be, I, I don't think there's, I don't really think there's that much that's going to be usable on Dixie Highway. Because what people don't realize unless they actually go and look at it, is that the Dixie Highway is higher than where our parking is, there's quite a downward section to it.
Yeah, do you still see a lot of lights, car lights all the time? And just, you ought to come out and just sit out there for one night, when rotten manor's going and that whatever air gun thing they're shooting out there constantly, all night long, and the cars coming out of there all the time, none of you guys would like that. You wouldn't like this right by your house either. Can, can, can that drive-in be set much farther back, instead of right by Dixie Highway?
You can't do that.
I mean...
If you don't even know how, with this ORB park, what, what hours is it going to be operating? Are you going to have intermix of travel and out, of traffic with, with this going on at the same time that the ORB parts going there? I mean, it's hard to help sometimes getting out of Dixie, or hurt over this.
The ORB park, I think, will be pretty much closed in the evenings. Uh, it's, it's intended to be open different hours, different days, different times of the year, because they know, once the summer's kind of passed, the use of it will drop down and they're going to close it. I think it's every Tuesday for maintenance, and I don't think you're going to see much of any of it.
I still think, I still think through the year, even if, even if COVID-19 wasn't going on, you're going to have all the track for the, the RV, you know, you're going to have all the stuff from Renaissance Festival, and then you're going to have a drive-in theater, and then you've got rotten manor going all the time, it's, it's, it's not quiet at all. None of you guys would like that by your house, none of you. You'd be the first people going, hey, I don't want this here. Now, if you could set it farther back, so it doesn't affect anywhere near Dixie Highway, because the sound does travel.
It's going to deter residential property sales too. I mean, nobody's going to want to buy my, my late front lot, if they got to look at a forty foot screen across the street from their drive-in, from their driveway. I mean...
I just, I just think more consideration needs to be made for, for the residents that live in this area of Groveland Township. I understand you want to build this Dixie Highway corridor thing, but there's plenty of, you know, we're up in, tucked in the very corner of Groveland Township, and I just feel like we're just being brushed aside so that we can just develop and build whatever we want on Dixie Highway. And the argument's been made in the past, well, people aren't going to build houses along Dixie Highway, well, you go up and down Dixie, all the way down, all the way down to the southern part of Dixie there, there's houses being built, it happens up there on Dixie Highway.
Didn't they just purchase extra land out back for parking? Why can't it go out back? I mean, why does it have to be right on Dixie Highway? How are you going to hide a forty foot tall by sixty foot screen? And it's not higher, her house is higher than all her, she's the highest point.
Well, the, you know, I, um, I'll just be honest, I'm, I'm not understanding, if, let me, let me say, it sounds to me as if your position would be no growth on Dixie Highway.
Any area where we're currently living, I would say no, yeah, because it's a residential area.
Well, I mean...
What more growth can you have?
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Um, we're having people raise their hands and ask questions, and then give their name and their address, and I will be happy to call on you, but we're not going to do a free throw up here. So, so, but, so I, you know, we have property right now that's not residential, the Renaissance Festival. And so, you know, so we're looking at, um, the type of growth, not putting brick and mortars and, you know, a bunch of different traffic, you know, curb cuts, people coming in and out. So, we're, we're looking at, how can we have use of that property that will benefit the community and, and, you know, also be one that, you know, doesn't have that industrial commercial type flavor to it that a lot of buildings and structures would.
And you don't think staring at a forty foot by sixty foot screen is, is that?
You know, I, I think that you're, you're going to find that it's, it's in the corner, you have shrubs and trees in that area.
Trees are most hard, are blocking the majority of it. Originally, we thought we could use the backside of it for possible advertisement for, you know, for sponsorships or whatever.
Yeah, the trees are pretty much covered to the point where it, that's not going to
be used for any type of advertising or anything, so...
And, and I'm not, I'm not trying to, to diminish anything any of you're saying, but the screen we're building isn't, I, I mean, I, I wish there was a way for you to see it first. It's, it's not like if you go over to US-23 and they've got that huge white and blue brick thing, that's not, this is, this is, it's far more natural than that. It, I mean, there is metal involved in it, but it's basically built out of wood. It's, a lot of it, and once it's painted on the backside, it will blend into what you see from Dixie Highway. I mean, it's just, that's the reality of it. I mean, it's telephone poles and, and, and metal sheeting, and if we, if the backside of it's painted greens and browns, just like other things that we've done on the festival site, it has a tendency just to camouflage it. And people do come in and out of there at night, and I'm not saying that they can't hear the police when they're on the radios and stuff, but we've had events there at night now for six years in a row. Every evening, starting in September going through the end of October. And I'd be, I'd be shocked if anybody even knew about it. Not, not that I'm hiding it, it's just, a couple hundred cars, they don't make it down. And as big as that property is, nobody sees it. As far as sound goes, it, I mean, when I first started working there, Bob had a company come out and go all the way around the perimeter of the property, checking the sound. I don't remember the, I mean, I don't remember the codes and all that stuff that happened. But the result was, you don't, you don't hear anything from the festival. And this is not the festival, it's not, I mean, the festival can do well, but you don't hear it on, on those streets. We, we have family members that live on those streets, and I know for a fact it's just not, I, you know, like I said, I'm not taking away from what you guys feel, I'm not, I get it, but I just don't think it's going to be as horrendous as you're thinking. I think there are far worse things that are going to be going out there, and if you don't think it's going to go in, then the handwriting's on the wall, but a lot of the property that's sitting out there was purchased by people to make it commercial property, to develop it, to make that area grow. And it's not just where the festival is at, it's up and down Dixie Highway, it's the reality of life. So, pick and choose what you're going to have. You're right, you could put in car washes, you could put in McDonald's, you could do, I mean, you could have McDonald's and a Wendy's and a KFC, and some people would be very happy. But that's not what you guys are doing, I think you're doing it carefully, I do. And that's not just us, I'm just saying in general. You guys have always been very conscious of the aesthetics and of the community around us. I mean, we're putting in trees, if one tree dies next to that trailer park by their own hand, cutting it down and using it for a Christmas tree, then I get a letter that I have to replace it. That's, you've been sticklers about it. But I don't think that you're being short-sighted, I just don't, and I, but I also don't think you can stop progress. There's going to be growth.
There might be progress, but you're living there, the sound travels, I hear rotten manor going all the time, all summer long, all the way up to midnight, all the, all the traffic coming in and out of there, you hear all of it. I got people turning on my driveway bad enough now to turn around. When Renaissance Festival running, it's constant, constant enough that I got to go down and I got to put barriers in there, so I don't have all the traffic, you know, it's constant. None of you guys would like that. You know, it's, 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 it's going to be every day, once in a while, okay, but every day is too much. You got that, I said, the rail liners going on like that, and a couple people can't figure out which way to go off, coming out of there, go to I-75, so they pull up my road, turn my driveway, it's constant, constant all the time. I got dogs I got to keep, you know, back away from, trying to run out of cars that are pulling in my driveway? You know, I understand there's progress, but, you know, people have been living there for over forty years. They get some consideration too. You know, Miracle Twin Drive has been closed for, for decades. I don't think we need a drive-in theater over there. You could have events, but when it gets into the evening time and late at night, enough's enough. None of you guys would like that.
Yeah, I'm Jackie Perez, I live on Perryville Road, I'm the third house in, so, yes, we do hear it. My dogs, my grandkids hear, just, we hear it, you know? Understand that, and I know that's only in certain part of the year we're dealing with it. Now, we're going to be dealing with an ORB parking there, that's a heck of a lot more traffic, a lot more people. The rotten manor, when you, I don't know what house it is in there, but the loud booms that constantly go on scare the heck out of my grandkids and my dogs, and it's every single night, every time they're open. So, yes, we do hear it, I mean, sound travels, we're, you know, in the country, and, and yes, I, just as a neighbor that lives around there, understand that if we have it during certain times, that's the time that we live in, that we have been living with it for many, many, many years, but to have it, you know, all the time and the traffic in there, yeah, that's not what we want to hear. So, again, just, because you came in a little later, so... So, again, just because you came in a little later, so the plan is to run partially through the year, you know, end of May, maybe June 1st through into October, Thursday through Sunday, probably from 8:00 PM to midday, that kind of, just to sort of clear on the plan usage.
A lot of us have heard better, like, we work, and so, you know, millions in the traffic. Yes, I agree. I put up barriers, I mean, serious barriers, because we're right there off of Dixie Highway. People constantly wanna pull in my driveway. I, myself, have been hit, I've been yelled at and everything else, because they don't want, they won't, I don't want them to turn my driveway. You know, so, and my dogs are constantly running around scared to death because of the noise, people driving up, coming in. So, there's like four houses, three four houses on Dixie Highway, and the way out the barrier is gone. But, that, it is too loud, but it was there when we lived out there, almost. So, we've learned to put up with this for weeks, you know, but that long a time, and all late at night, you know, we're working people.
It's constantly constant, and I live at 7:00, 8:00, Perryville. Okay, drive-in is all well and good if you're getting the same, it's gonna be done by midnight. No, it's not. It can start at 10 o'clock in the morning, 10, meaning they will be out until 2:00 AM. My husband and my brother-in-law have to sleep, and you got people peeling out of Dixie Highway. You do. And again, we go back to, you guys all live out of the movies. We live right off Dixie Highway. And I'm sorry, but it's obnoxious. It's obnoxious at 7:00 AM at night when they're letting Renaissance people out. It does damage, it's loud and it's obnoxious, and you wouldn't wanna live there, and you wouldn't wanna go up there. So, yeah, maybe we won't hear the movie, maybe we won't see the screen, but we have people who don't live in our county, coming down, who don't respect the fact that there are people that have to work. All four down, all four, the first four houses on my road, all four of them work. And you're sitting there gonna tell me, starting Thursday night, that in June, that a movie lets out at 2:00 in the morning, and they're gonna peel out, go have some fun, waking all of these people up. Sorry, guys, we don't get air, so our windows are open all summer long. We're gonna hear it, no matter what you people say. It's not gonna be some wonderful situation, it's not. We're not sure what you all think. You don't litter my yard, you don't hear the noise that comes just from Dixie alone. So, I want you guys to really consider this before you okay it. That, yeah, okay, yeah, it's a business, I get it, it's gonna develop fine. But we are starting to look like waterford. We are gonna start looking like toward highway. Sorry, we are, if you let us go in, sorry, we are. So, I don't think it's gonna be done by midnight during the summer, it's not.
I think we're all under the, growth is inevitable, it's coming, obviously, the architecture, all of it. I just am questioning that the talks of the notification setbacks and everything like that, and the aesthetics of it. I think that in current times, the change is coming, people are trying to figure out how to make money with property that's being seconded. I get that, I get that, it's facing all of us. And I just think that it needs to be done responsibly, and this is kind of fast. I mean, I didn't get a letter. You guys have voted on this tonight. I mean, I think there needs to be a noise study done, I think it needs to be tabled for a minute, because I don't think that the neighbors weren't properly notified about this. And I know you did it with only, I know what it is, it's 300 feet from the property, but this is kind of a major thing, 400 cars is a lot of cars in the middle of the night. I mean, we live there, we live there, we've, you know, accepted the Renaissance Festival, we're dealing with rotten manor. I mean, it's not pretty to look at, and it's not fun to listen to, and now they're doing it at Christmas, too. So, it's just, I think that there needs to be some serious looks at what happens next. Growth is, it's happening, you know, we're also looking at dilapidated buildings of, you know, and where, you know, when are those getting fixed up? I mean, everybody's feeling the financial difficulties right now, and when's that coming? Because that stuff's been purchased by people who have the money to fix it up, and they're not doing it. So, I think it should be tabled, and I think you guys need to do a study and a noise, and come, come, listen. Listen to just road traffic.
Yeah, I think you guys oughta try and pull out Perryville Road during the Renaissance Festival.
Yes, and I'm not bashful of the festival, I'm gonna tell you that Oakland County did a phenomenal job. I don't wait very long, and when there was serious backups and people parking on private property, it was dealt with, and it was dealt with quick, and it was over. And it's not been an issue for a very long time. But still, it's a lot of traffic, and it's something we have dealt with, we've accepted it. We live here, we love where we live, I'm just saying, this is a big deal, this is something big. And it's on weekends when people are trying to relax and enjoy their property. And now, every night for four nights, every weekend.
You got something going on more during the daytime and ended at 5:00 or 6:00 instead of going into the night.
Well, we, as I stated earlier, we have, we know that there's gonna be growth on Dixie Highway. And we've looked at things that, you know, we can keep more outdoor activities, which we think is consistent with the lifestyle in this community. People live in parks, and, you know, we got the beaches, and we have the Renaissance Festival, which is an outdoor entertainment type venue. Same thing per se with the rotten manor, it's got the structures there. But, and so, we look at this as another way for the community to enjoy more outdoor-type activities instead of building a movie theater, you know, or building a bowling alley, you know? So, we, as we discussed this in the last meeting, we look at this being consistent with having those outdoor activities in this community. We're looking at, the Renaissance Festival is thousands of cars. Am I right? Yeah. And so, we're looking at 200 to 400 because of the size, they're going with a smaller screen so that they can't accommodate, you know, 1,000 cars, because the screen's not gonna be big enough. So, they're looking at a screen size that will limit the number of cars that can be out there. Again, the sound will be through the radio on the car vehicle, there won't be any structures out there.
I understand, understandably, you heard the radio of 200 cars? I mean, it can be kind of loud, and I think you guys really need to experience being there. Like I say, we'll see the rotten manor run, and for the Renaissance Festival, all of that happens constantly from morning till late evening. You know, a lot of lower side was taken off, screwing tires, the police yelling at people trying to direct traffic, and trying to get in and out of Perryville Road is a real pain. I guarantee, none of you guys would like it. You'd be sitting there going, what the hell? If you had, if you had, I'm not trying to tell them that you can't pay money, but pass something that quits at 5:00, not go into the evening time or into the morning time. You know, you go on any other drive-in, he would buy there, all the cars that come out there, the traffic, even 200 cars trying to get out is, you guys wouldn't like it yourself, even these guys wouldn't like it. You'd be sitting there going, I don't, I don't want to pay money to live here and have this. But everybody's been there for over 40 years, so it's something that you guys really need to go and experience. If the Renaissance Festival was gonna go there all along this year, you guys should come on out there and see what really goes on. It really is a pain. You're gonna end up with a traffic light there, and none of us wanna have that.
You guys don't need to know what kind of traffic the ORB park is gonna bring.
Yeah.
I mean, you have no idea, because it's not fully open, so...
But we do know on the major event that we had last year and the movie one this year, it holds, and this was a big deal, about 5,000 people, about 500 jeeps, that was a big deal. We had no problem with the traffic going there.
But it's certainly going during the Renaissance, too, correct?
It could be, although that was a major event they had. I'm assuming they're aware, I've made them aware that they need to be aware of the days that the Renaissance Festival is open, so they don't end up conflicted with that. They would be just as concerned about having people not be able to get in at night, even though it's 250 acres, I think, when the park is done. The amount of traffic that you'll see there is miniscule compared to the Renaissance Festival.
Trick 'em down Perryville Road.
Yes, it's not gonna be on that size, I understand that, but when you have a park that is a four-wheeler or, I don't know what all the size of vehicles are gonna allow in there, or whatever.
Some jeeps, some more stuff.
Men like toys, so, and I'm not saying women don't either, I'm not saying that, but they're gonna pile out here, they're gonna pile out here. I already know people, and I work in Auburn Hills, that are ready for this, okay? So, they're gonna pack out here.
And once it gets well-known and more and more people come out, you try to come down to Edge Hall and make a lot of noise on Dixie, just for the Renaissance Festival. Yeah, you wanna sit there for five or six traffic lights at least? It's bad, it's gonna get a whole lot worse. So, we don't need that plus, like I said, the nighttime is gonna be overpass midnight, you know it's gonna be that way. You're gonna tell me you wanna try and go to sleep and have the constant tire squealing and stuff, it happens. Even just coming out of a McDonald's parking lot, it happens, but it's gonna be a whole lot worse unless you really recess that off the ground, off of Dixie Highway. I'm tired of people turning on my driveway, I could probably count 40 odd cars or better a day, at least that turn around my driveway, I'd fit up with that.
We've been having a problem lately, and the police have been coming over because we've been calling them, because we all live right behind the gravel there, used to be gravel at Talbot. They sold to some people that exits it off of Dixie Highway, and they come out on the weekend, and I'm telling you, I find out on my growth discount, and there were eight, uh, motorhomes there, and, I mean, there was pickup trucks, I think there was nine pickup trucks, and they were shooting fireworks and everything else. It was late at night, we called the police, they called the police on it, because every single weekend they'd come up from, you know, down south of us, and it's their party weekend.
And some of the stuff they let off is kind of quarter sticks of diamond, because that's loud.
It's a shake stuff.
Nicole, can you tell us who that was?
Um, I don't know.
There was...
I lived home, I wasn't home, I don't know.
You don't know, we used your dad's property.
Well, no, it's not my dad's property.
Doesn't he, he stole it?
She knows, she's been down there, she's been dragging down there, hangs out with them all. Well, yeah, they're friends of mine that have purchased the property.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you. I just like to make a final comment as far as talking about the aesthetics of this screen. You know, when the ORB park was originally called to us in one of the meetings, you know, there was talk of having buildings out there and other stuff to act as a barrier, you know, so you weren't seeing all the cars, the jeeps on the track or whatever you wanna call it. You know, and there was gonna be stuff built there to act as a blind or whatever you would wanna call it. Now, that's not happening, now it's just a parking lot there. So, my concern is, we're talking about just a small screen now, well, what's next? Are you gonna put, have two screens, or, you know, it's just, when does it stop? And I keep going back that, you know, it seems to be fine, keep Groveland Township rural for everyone except for those of us that live close to Dixie Highway. And I don't think that's right. I don't care whether you, it's, you know, we need, we don't need to develop. I've lived here, Dixie, 49 years, and, you know, it should be kept rural.
I may, in regards to your question about the park, they are putting that fence up now, and the plan is next year to take that parking deck that's along Dixie Highway and drop it down, which just helps suppress the noise even more.
Well, I understand, but originally...
Instead of putting a berm up, it's actually more effective to drop it down into the hole.
But originally, when we talked about this quite a few years ago, I forget what it was, but, you know, there was talk of having, you know, other stuff there, I don't know, buildings or whatnot, that we're gonna act as a barrier to that, and that's not happening.
Well, there have been discussions about a lot of different things that they've looked at and what they ultimately do. I can't tell you for sure now, but I know that that deck parking that's right next to Dixie is intended to be cut back down, so it'll be low to the road, and that helps suppress the noise even more. But I have been there when they've had 500 jeeps there, and you can't hear the noise on the other side of Dixie except one guy that came there incorrectly, without any mufflers on. And I gave the county a lot of bad comments about it, and they've assured me that won't happen again. So, you really don't hear the noise from the ORB park there. I've had somebody come and tell me that, I heard them, they were making noise, he gave me the weekend, and there was nobody on the property at all, with some guy probably going down Dixie Highway with a Harley with open pipes or something.
Well, no, I understand, like I say, you know, we're not hearing the noise from the ORB park.
No, you're not, because it's very...
But what I, what I do agree about is the fact that, you know, especially the kind of people that are probably even more likely gonna go to a drive-in, are those the type that are gonna pull out on the Dixie, you know, punch in their car, whether they got, you know, a long exhaust or whatnot, peel in the tires, you hear that kind of stuff. It happens, I mean, it, you know, it happens there at the festival when the police are right there directing traffic.
Yeah.
So, you know, to have 400 cars pulling out at midnight or 1:00 in the morning or whatever this, you know, depends if you're having one or two, you're gonna hear those cars. You're never gonna have everyone come out politely, pull out and, you know, accelerate like a normal person. You're gonna hear all this. And, you know, it's, like I say, we can hear the rotten manor every night, you can hear whatever sound effects they have going there and all that. So, you're gonna, now you're gonna add this traffic coming out. And I, you know, I agree, it's gonna be the noise of the cars more than anything, it's gonna be the annoying part.
Can we have the, you know, it's gonna be a couple months now before rotten manor starts up, can we have someone go out and do a sound check on that one?
Yeah, I put a note here on, from listening to tonight's meeting, that I need to go find out what the loud boom is that they're referring to, a rotten manor. I'll talk to two brothers that don't...
The guys are real nice, you know.
Yeah, I know, but it's not, it's not the loud boom that we're hearing from behind us. It, you know, where they're, you know, I mean, at the festival, I think at the beginning, closing, they have one of those, I know what you call it, like an air bomb or whatever, you know? You're not hearing that kind of noise, but you're hearing that constant sound effects and stuff. I mean, it's not annoying loud, but it's just, it's noise that's there that takes away from...
I have a question, I'm just like, I have a question in the back.
Hunter Taylor, 508 North Brent Road. I've been to rotten manor multiple times, I can tell you exactly what that big boom is, and I can even tell you from standing right next to it, it hurts my ears and I already can't hear anything. Hence why I've got headphones on to hear you guys. It's a nuisance, I can only imagine living next to it, because it goes off every 15 minutes when someone's going through the forest. That's where it is, that's where it starts.
All right, we will absolutely look into that, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from members of the public?
Yeah, I do, Dana, how many people were notified about?
Oh, I don't know, I think about seven, eight. I do a 300 foot from the...
It was published in the paper, by the... You published in the paper. Any other comments, questions? I do thank you for coming and taking your time to hear what you're at, but I do appreciate it. I think you may not always agree, but I would tell you that the management at the Renaissance Festival, we've been dealing with for years now, and they've been very receptive to our polite complaining about situations that, you know, are not conducive to the community, and they've been receptive to that, and they've worked on it. So, we have a, you know, an organization here that's a business that's, you know, trying to provide a good venue for entertainment for our community, and they try to keep it in the natural, you know, kind of aesthetics that we want. So, yeah, is no other comments?
Can I just add a question or a comment to the evening?
Yes.
Everybody comes up there at this time. I go home, so I can ask some easy questions, why I feel relaxed. That's not it.
That's not it. And the Renaissance Festival, you put up with it. The traffic, like I said, is really bad. You guys should really experience trying to pull out Perryville Road on Dixie Highway with the police there and when they're not. And I don't think we and you guys would appreciate any of it.
The, you know, and the dilemma that we're facing is, you know, growth is coming. And, um, you know, a township or a municipality will just end up in litigation if you try to prohibit, you know, people from coming out. People can sell their property, and we look at how, you know, we have an overlay district that we developed through two years of work now. Meeting, we have meetings with the community to talk about, you know, we know growth is coming to Dixie Highway. We wanna make sure that we try to still keep that outdoor atmosphere. And I recognize, it is not that we are not hearing you. I recognize that for those that are living along Dixie Highway, that it is bothering them. It is, there is gonna be additional traffic. It is not that we don't hear you, but what we're saying is, we have to look at for the growth that's coming, you know, we're taking a look at what we think is the less impactful to the overall community than, I agree, it isn't necessarily gonna be to the houses immediately near those properties that are up and down Dixie Highway.
Do you know that I've been denied access to get into Perryville Road from the police? That I gotta go all the way around, down Tripp Road, down Van Road, come down Perryville Road to get to my house, which is the first one on the street? Other than a white house on the corner?
Is that been recently? Because we've talked...
Uh, not recently, it probably hasn't been running this year, but I've been denied in the past.
Yeah, I mean, we, we had heard that input before, and so we talked to the police about changing that. So, it was my understanding that had changed.
But after a day of the police trying to direct traffic, they're not so friendly, okay? And when you're trying to pull in and out of there, and they're talking to you like you're a piece of dog dirt, it's a little upsetting, you know? Enough.
But you're right, there was a problem with an officer. Yeah, and I talked about it, called the Auburn County Sheriff's, said that guy's not coming out there again. So, I understand that they're legitimate rapes. But when we hear about them, we take steps to act on them. And Captain has been very responsible. You know, it's like somebody saying, a guy was speeding down Groveland, I live on Groveland. Yeah, I know, but it doesn't happen all the time, so I can't have them there every minute of the day.
I understand that, but not if you're talking during the week, during working days.
That you want this Thursday through Sunday, right?
Or is it gonna continue when, if the festival comes back for winter? Is the drive-in still gonna be a thing, or is this to make up for the difference?
No, it probably would continue unless it's a failure.
So, you have stragglers at the Renaissance Festival from nine, ten o'clock at night? How's that gonna work?
That's something we have to deal with and we'll have to figure out. And I'm not saying, I'm not saying everybody, I mean, yeah, we have things that we have to deal with that any business has things that they have to deal with. So, absolutely incorrect. But I, I just don't, I just don't know how to make it better without just saying we won't do it. And I'm not prepared to, at this point, to say that. So, I think, I think we get, I think there's a way to strike a balance and be able to work things out. And a lot of you guys are people that, that I know have come to the festival and been in my office, not my office, but in your office. And anytime there's a problem, that we find out about it. And if you've come to us, we listen and we try and respond to it. And it's not just one officer that's been told they're not allowed to come back. The police, sometimes they can be a problem. So, there have been multiple people that have been a problem. And over the years, multiple people have been not allowed to come back. It's a volunteer job that they do because of how they're paid. But lots of people wanna do it. It's not like we have to put up with somebody that's gonna be rude or not do their job.
Well, that's, it's not even a small part. Once you add everything together, it's a big part, you know? It's a lot of traffic, it's a lot of noise. It's, you know, you wanna have, be able to sit out back on your porch and be able to just relax, enjoy the evening, and that's going on all the time. And you're gonna add a drive-in theater, and it will go past midnight because it doesn't get dark till late. And then whatever stragglers, people come in and out of there, and except, I guarantee none of you guys would want that. And I would like you to definitely consider that. There's gotta be some other way of getting farther away from Dixie. You keep the aesthetics of everything, have the entrance and leave, come out of the, what's the next dirt road up there? Up the hill? Have it come out of there. Why does he have to come out at the end of Perryville Road all the time? It's a mess. You know, when the cars are trying to get in there, and I understand these folks wanna make money. I'm not trying to say don't make money. When you're trying to come down Dixie Highway to get to Perryville as you're heading north, and the line of traffic is over a mile, two miles along? You know, you're waiting to see if somebody's gonna pull out before you? There's a potential accident right there? It's bad enough, you don't need the extra stuff and the extra hassle. I'd like to be able to go out and sit outside, and I had my dogs be scared of all the noises and the fireworks and whatever else that goes on, and be able to enjoy my evening. That's not gonna do it. They wouldn't do it for you.
I understand, I understand.
Really, I can really consider, there's gotta be some better options than right now. Because you guys are probably heading for a traffic right there, and it's gonna be one heck of a mess.
Any other, we're gonna get ready to close this public hearing.
Question. I have two lots directly across from the gate.
Hold on, one second, I'm sorry to interrupt. You need to give your name and where...
Chad Minock, I'm off of Groveland Road, but I have two lots right directly across from Renaissance, and I never got a letter or anything, I heard this through the back door. So, I kinda don't like that it was pushed through the back door or not. My tax bill came on time, but you guys didn't give me a letter.
They were mailed, but...
I sent letters out to everybody, measured three hundred feet from my mail.
I'll let you know when I get one.
Yeah, you never got a letter, you...
Nope, this is all backdoor. Don't appreciate it.
That's a little presumptuous, don't you think?
My taxes came on time.
Well, if you think they're doing it to do us a big favor, then I can tell you that's not how that works. That's not, that's not how it's...
I have three hundred pieces of property, and they all came at the same time. So, I kinda, it's a little presumptuous to not get this letter.
Um, there was another question.
Okay, comment. My name is Susan Cole, and I live at thirty-seven twenty Children's Road, which is a private road by Otten and Jocelyn, so I'm not anywhere near. But my son lived on Perryville for four years, and he was halfway between Dixie and Van Road. And I was always very grateful that I didn't live here because of the noise. And when we talked about development of Dixie Highway, this is not the kind of development I thought you were talking about. We have an ORB park, we have the park with the lake, and we have a campground, and we have all kinds of outdoor stuff. I don't think we need a drive-in theater too. I just don't think that, this is the kind of development that I was thinking that Groveland Township would want.
What park would we go to before?
Huh?
What park, little acreage we brought?
Groveland, Groveland. Just the holly, yes, by the campground. I mean, we have so many outdoor things, I don't think we need. We have the Renaissance Festival. When I go shopping towards Lynch, when I come home, I come to Groveland Road to get down there, go back way, that's most direct for us home. During Renaissance Festival, I think a different way. I don't want any carpet back, and I don't even have to deal with that every day. I feel sorry for those homeowners that live there. I don't think they need one more thing.
Any other comments before we close the public hearing? Uh, yes.
Sorry, I also, many of us love Lisa Platt, who lives at the same address, thirty-seven twenty Children's Road. I obviously don't live where they live, but I want you guys to seriously consider, it's not gonna be just Groveland Township people coming to the drive-in. And you're gonna have people from Lynch, you're gonna have people from Grand Lynch, you're gonna have people from all over. They're not always going to be the good type of people that you want here. They're respectful, they could, we've all been shut down for so long, people are itching for something to do. I don't want to draw in the wrong crowd. Especially for everybody who lives in that vicinity right there, I don't think they deserve that. I think there's other reasons, there's other ways to get revenue in, to help our community. I don't think this is it. And I don't even live where they live, but I'm not, I'm not for this.
I actually have been monitoring the Renaissance site to see what they were gonna put on there about the COVID members and all that. I don't want Detroit, all of these people with the hot spots, I don't want them to come out here and make us blow up. So, I've been trying to watch to see if they've addressed it.
I don't think that makes sense.
That's okay. What, that we addressed the...
No, 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 that we, right now, are you planning on going forward with the Renaissance Festival?
What we're doing right now is waiting for, for posters to show to determine what we're, we can and can't do. We obviously will, will not open if it can't be done with the governor's blessing and the blessing of the health department. But I'm not, I can't sit here and say that if that happens, that we wouldn't open. I, that would not make any kind of sense.
Understood.
But it's not, as of, as of today, we cannot open. And we cannot open means that that's because the governor's office and the health department both have restrictions as such that don't allow events like ours to open. They are opening up further north. There's some water parks and stuff that are north of Saginaw that have already been allowed to open. But that's not here. But that is also not to say that in a month from now or six weeks from now that things will get to a point where they decide that they can open it up. So, I don't want, I don't want anybody to think that I'm saying that, other than what I'm saying. It's, we are a business. We are a business, and we are, we're not only a business, we have an obligation to the people that work with us to open. We have a hundred and eighty people that own buildings on our property, one hundred and eighty. People that depend on that for a lot of their life. And it drives us pretty, a lot, to try and help them survive this. And we've got an event, we're doing Downy Eastern Market this weekend. The only thing we're doing is babysitting the space because they don't let us have it. We have our vendors coming down so that they have an opportunity to make some money. Because some of them can't, some of them are going under. So, there's more to the reality of my business, our business, this township and everything else than, than just the surface. There's people's livelihoods, there's people's lives, there, there's all of it. And again, you're not gonna change it, it's not gonna stop, it's gonna keep going. I mean, take control of what we have. I live here, I live right down the street. I mean, I live down Tripp Road, I get the traffic. I've lived there since I was fifteen years old, so that's a million years. I've dealt with the traffic from the Renaissance Festival. And while I, while I understand the traffic can be a pain in the butt, I also know that it is better now than it used to be. And we keep trying to make it better, and we will continue. And the door is open to our office, anytime somebody has a problem or they have a need for anything, then we listen. And there's a whole lot of people in this community that have utilized that, not just to claim to you but, or the police or anything else, but they actually come and sat down in my office and talked about it. And we're trying to be addressing, address all those issues. The people that don't do that, that just are angry, I don't know how to help them. Because there are avenues, there are ways. And if the police are causing free fire on Dixie Highway, the only way I'm gonna know is if I hear about it. And the people that let me know, they're ungrateful to them, and they're told that. A complaint doesn't get yelled at from me. Somebody who calls in with a concern or a complaint is somebody I thank for bringing it to our attention. We can't make things better if we don't hear. And if people complain behind their backs, doesn't help us, so...
Yes, the holly has been great in keeping all our numbers down during the virus. The virus isn't going away, it's not. It's gonna be here for a while. And I, for one, don't want a bunch of people coming from all over the place. I don't, I don't wanna be a hotspot, I don't wanna be a Boing County, I don't wanna be in Detroit.
Understood, definitely understood. Any other comments, questions before we close the public hearing?
I make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Neil Second Ben?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the public hearing has been closed. Ben, you had modified the existing ordinance. Was there anything that you wanted us, it's pretty simple changes you made. Is there anything that you wanted us to be aware of?
Madam Chair, under the commission for the record, Untolerable Beckett and Rado Incorporated, Potowski, Traverse City in Ann Arbor. No, I took your direction at the last meeting and made some changes to the ordinance where it was only allowed in the industrial district, and presented that for you tonight. You may add or delete stuff. For the public here, I just point a clarification, some of you may know this, but if you don't, this body has no authority to change any ordinance of the zoning, either the text or the map, have no authority to do that. They would just make a recommendation, and this will go today or at a later date, depending if they act or not, to the foreboard. And that body is the only body that has the ability to change this. Keep in mind, the state statute does not require the bodies beyond this to hold a public hearing. So, if you have issues or concerns, or you wanna speak out, you should follow the township agenda, because by state statute, they don't have public hearings. They don't notify people within three hundred feet. I know some of you said you weren't, I'm not questioning that at all, it's not my area. I'm just making sure that you're aware of the procedure that we're going through. Thank you, Madam Chair. If you guys have any questions, we'd be glad to answer.
All right, with that, any comments, questions from members of the commission?
First comment, as far as approval for an activity like this, like the Renaissance Festival, we review those things on an annual basis, and we'll treat issues and issue corrections as we go. If this gets approved to do with a drive-in movie, does it require an annual review and reapproval? Or is it a one-time approval?
Well, what we're looking at tonight is the ordinance. And the ordinance expanding it so that it allows use. We will, we will vote on that. If it's approved, that we make a recommendation that the ordinance be changed, that will go to the township for it, and they will vote to approve it or not. So, it's just to allow the use. Now, the Renaissance Festival does a special use permit that we have done on an annual basis, where as they look at what they're doing to the property, then we review it.
So, this would be different. This would not require a special use permit.
Yeah, no, no, our last meeting, we tied in.
Oh, it would be tied in.
So, when we get, we'll already have to turn in the information for what you'll be looking at all the time. So, at that time, you can, you can give us the adjustments we need to make. We can discuss problems, algorithms. That's the way the Renaissance Festival's been working, and every year, there's something here and there. So, there probably will be with us. But I think it's working so far.
And the reason I'm saying that is to try to look at the unknowns that we discussed tonight. And if this goes forward, and it has a lot of additional approvals to go through, that there is that opportunity on an annual basis to review it, and if things didn't approve or didn't work out the way we thought, that it could be pulled.
It could be pulled, but I would think that before it was pulled, there could be adjustments.
Exactly, my point is...
So, it's a work of progress, obviously.
You've got a reputation for working with the community and addressing these issues. And I'm just saying, if we didn't know you, if we hadn't had that feedback, if someone wasn't responsive, the township has that ability to hold it back.
That's what we should.
Any questions, comments?
Ben, just to echo my comment, uh, again, this, this is the Dixie Highway. It says going to move. And it's, uh, it's, it's difficult to see things change. Uh, our goal is to try to minimize the impact, not most close by, to try to maximize the impact on the community. Uh, I've been in other communities. I've been in Grove in twenty, twenty-seven years, so I'm not new to the area. But I've been in other neighborhoods. And there are other things that could come in that would not be as welcome. And again, this is a business. Businesses can come in. We can't deny them their right. And we have to be very particular in how we grow things.
Sir, can I ask you a question?
I'm sorry, where is it?
That is part of where we hit the public hearing.
Okay.
Close the public hearing. So now we're just doing the board delivery. Any other comments or questions? Uh, with that, I will take a motion.
I make a motion that we recommend the township board to change the ordinance, to make the change to the section fifty-four, eleven ninety-eight, to allow outdoor theaters in R-one, RM-one districts with conditions. And that's very important, with the condition.
Second?
I'll second.
Oh, that's second?
Do.
So if we can have a roll call, roll please. David Uwe? David Uwe?
Yes.
Lynn Shane?
Yes, ma'am.
Jim Christopher?
Hello.
Neil Lovin?
Yes.
Done for seven, yay?
Yes.
Jim Peltier?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. We have, uh, majority votes passed. We will take this, uh, ordinance and pass it to the township board for their approval. Um, do we have a, a date in which we think that will happen? Danielle?
Probably be guessing.
Wait.
The August meeting.
Okay, meeting in August.
If you're, if you're done with it, the next step would be the next township board meeting. That would be Danielle would put it on the August agenda, I guess.
That's, can you get, do you have a date?
The second Monday.
Second Monday.
August, whatever it is.
Second Monday of August.
Is that the, is that the ten, the ten?
Is that...
Well, that's one, probably be the second.
So for those that are here and are interested, the approval of this will happen in the township. The second Monday of August. All right. Um, next on the agenda is public comment. And I'll take any public comments, however, it's usually, the public comment is for things that weren't on the agenda because we just had the discussion as well. So if there were other comments.
Okay, I have a public comment.
Yes.
My public comment is to the public. Um, if, I under, I do understand, I lived on Trip Road, I get it. I understand not wanting things to change. And, and I'm not, and I'm not going to ever lie to you about what we're going to do. But I would like to extend an invitation for you guys to come out and walk with us out there and take a look at the property, see what we're doing, see what we're planning. We'll listen to what you have to say. I'm not going to change everything. We're not going to change it. We put it before an engineer, we walk through the process. So if we get approval, we'll probably move forward. But it doesn't mean that we don't care. And it doesn't mean that if there's changes that would make sense to us, that we might not think of, that you, it might help with what you're looking at. So it's strictly up to you.
I, I would like to take you up on that.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you very much.
We're in the August every day. Five hours. Um, to be honest, you're off this ten, ten five.
Ten five?
Yeah.
Do you have a number we can, well...
No, I'll give, my office number is two four eight, six three four, five 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 two. I'm only getting in the August. You're welcome to come out and we got cold water, coffee, stuff like that. But Jason's there, my other son TJ is there. I don't, I don't know if it'll help, but it makes me feel very optimistic sending off. Okay?
We understand that you want to be...
I know, I know. You know what? I do know that you understand.
No, I, I'd ask you, if you sat in the middle of the room and you had all kinds of businesses and all kinds of noise and traffic around you and you wanted to have a peaceful evening, you think you could do that? With all those...
I, I don't think that it precludes having a peaceful evening. I think there are ways that we can work together and make this work out.
I don't think that's...
Okay, so we...
Tell them the evening time.
Okay, now we're taking up the evening time. And more than happy to talk to you, but now...
Yeah, we will, yeah. And I appreciate that. So we, we will, I appreciate your attendance and I appreciate the offer. I will definitely take you up on it.
Of course.
And I hope other members of the community will...
I hope you do too. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. You guys have a good night. Please take it. All right. Um, do we have any consultant or staff reports that you need to...
Madam Chair, members of the commission, uh, I do appreciate the cards concerning my, uh, health. I do have an appointment tomorrow at U of M to see if I can get some clinical and I have some experimental, uh, experimental doctor next week. But I certainly don't have any energy. I sleep all the time. And I am anticipating sometime between now and, uh, December of this year to go on disability. I just, unless something drastic happens where I get, you know, I sleep ten more hours and I'm up for three and then I take it back. So I'll give you a heads up, but that's what my, my plan is sometime in the rest of this year to go on disability insurance. So anyway...
We know that you remain in our thoughts and hearts, so...
Alas, you, thank you all.
Um, any comments or questions before we adjourn? Motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adjourn. Thank you, everyone.